Okay, good evening, everyone. So, before we call our meeting to order this evening, we are welcoming and swearing in a new trustee. Mayor Quayle Bittura will be swearing in Alex.
Great, good evening, everybody. And first of all, let me say a moment of gratitude from the City Council for all the hard work you folks are doing here on the Library Commission. I, in particular, I watch your meetings, and I think it's remarkable and wonderful what you all are doing. And you have a very active and engaging group, and it's really nice to see how the Board is working together, and especially with things like the DCP LA, and with you at the helm, Madam President, and all your trustees. It's really, we are very grateful for really what you're doing and what you continue to do. So last night, the City Council made an appointment. The motion was made by Vice Mayor Glenn Sylvester to appoint a new trustee to replace Commissioner Marcel Balmeo, who had resigned, I think it was in August because of work reasons. And so there have been many applicants who requested appointment to this position. The Vice Mayor interviewed some people, and he has settled on the trustee who is here today by the name of Alexander Rui Vivar as his appointee. So he made the motion. It was unanimously approved by all the council last night, and we are here today to conduct the swearing in. So with your permission, I'm gonna swear in Alex. Alex, why don't you come on up right here? Stand before your prayer. Raise your right hand, and then repeat after me, okay? I state your name.
I, Alexander Rui Vivar.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon.
The duties upon.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
All right.
Okay, I need you to sign right here. This, right, your name is.
And I think that makes it official.
All right.
I'd like to welcome Alex, Alexander, the Alex Board. I think we may have witness history. I think that is the fastest from an appointment.
Yeah.
To being sworn in less than 24 hours. I don't ever recall that happening, so that's really cool.
First time for everything. Welcome, Alex.
You're welcome to join the trustee.
Come on and have a seat.
Oh, I forgot. Go ahead. I wanted to say that, so the Vice Mayor wanted to present this book to Alex. It was, it's The Robert's Rules of Order Simplified. I'm sure he's not gonna read the whole thing, but wanted me to present this to you as a gift.
Have some homework.
Congratulations. All right, go ahead.
Well, welcome, Alex and Alex's family. Would you like to say a few words?
Oh, yes, of course.
Yeah.
I would like to thank again the Vice Mayor and the council for giving me this opportunity. It's really incredible honor, and I'm very appreciative of it. Anyways, a couple of words about myself. I'm a senior at Archbishop Buren High School. I'm involved in a lot of extracurricular activities and athletics. For example, I'm on the varsity soccer team. I'm part of the robotics team. I'm part of campus ministry and student government. These are some of the things that I do at my school.
That seems like a good fit. Thank you, Alex. All right, shall we get started? So, good evening, everyone, again, and welcome to the regular meeting for the Daily City Library Board of Trustees for October 15, 2019. I call this meeting to order. Shall we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please.
Trustee Rui Vivar?
Yes.
Did I close? Did I get that right?
Rui Vivar, yes.
Rui Vivar. Trustee Santos?
Present.
Trustee Fawapua?
Here.
Trustee Dallas?
Here.
President Logarta?
Present, thank you.
So I hope everyone's had a chance to review tonight's agenda. If there are no updates, may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
A motion.
Who shall second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. For the minutes from our last meeting from September 17, 2019, is there a motion to move?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. May we have our director's report?
Good evening, President Logarta, members of the Board of Trustees. At our last meeting, there was a request to see how we finished the last fiscal year. Just a reminder to everybody, Daily City adopts a two-year budget. We are in the second year of the two-year cycle that was adopted a year and a half ago. The books have been closed on fiscal year 2018, 2019, and that is the overview that we have for you this evening. And it's a look back. It's a snapshot of how we did in the past fiscal year. So without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Chayla, and feel free to ask questions as we go along. And we'll see where we end up.
All right. So as I mentioned last time around, there are a number of costs in our budget that are, that obviously affect our various library outlets, but that are not divided up by outlet. So this is simply focusing on that portion of the budget, which is specifically allocated to each of the four libraries. And so the big chunk of the budget for all areas is, of course, personnel. And so here you can see the personnel budget for each of the branches, whether we went over or under, and there are a number of factors that can influence that. And then also the full-time FTE, which is the full-time equivalent of full-time people, and the hourly staff FTE. So for the branches, the hourly staff are made up of library aides, and they staff the front service desk. And then we also have library pages, and they mainly just handle caring for the materials, getting them back on the shelves in the correct place so that somebody can find them the next time around. So you can see from that, we were somewhat off on the budget for the Bay Shore and John Daly branch, and the reason for that is that we did have somebody leave, a full-time staff person leave, and there's often a gap of, I think on average, about four months before we can fill a vacancy like that. So we have what's called salary savings, but it's also a bit of a scramble to cover. And then we went a little bit over at Ceremony, and I think that's probably because it is a two-year budget, as Mr. Curran said, and some increases in salaries can affect that. And here we have, so you can kind of see what goes into the allocation of personnel, some of the just facts of each of the branches. Open hours, this is the current open hours. It is a very limited schedule, especially at our two branches on the eastern side. The Bay Shore branch is only open two days a week. They're full days, but it's just the two days. And then the John Daly branch is only open three days at this time, and the other two are down to five days. And they are arranged in such a way that we can kind of stagger staff to make it more possible to cover more hours. The annual gate counts, this is from our last completed fiscal year, is there, that's the visits. Each of the library has, each of the libraries have an RFID security gate that also measures the number of people coming in and out. It actually differentiates based on their motion, whether they are coming in or out. So you can see the relative traffic, I guess, is the good word for that. And then, of course, our always go-to count for how busy a library is, which is the materials checkouts. These are physical materials, so books, magazines, DVDs, wireless hotspots, all the things that we check out, mainly books. And then, of course, the annual computer use sessions. Things tend to fall into kind of similar proportions for things, but some areas, like I would say John Daly, I know historically, there's a higher demand for the public computers than you might expect from some of the other measures that you would take for the branch. And this is just, I think I actually showed the same thing last time, but this is the salaries and benefits explains what they are. So there's, where we exceeded the budget at Ceremony, there was no actual full-time staff turnover this year, which, yay, that's a good thing. But there were some increases, including the minimum wage has gone up, and so it's affected, which is a good thing, but it has affected all of our hourly wages. Expenditures, as I mentioned, at John Daly and Bay Shore were down because we had a librarian too who resigned and moved on to other things and left the position vacant for quite some time. And then expenditures were under at Westlake as well. Why is it doing that?
That is interesting.
Okay. It's been flickering a little. I don't know, there were some issues earlier.
I think there's also.
Okay, not a super technical problem. Let me go back one. So expenditures were also a little bit under at Westlake, and we did have a library assistant that did resign in May, and so about three and a half months, actually, that's not bad. Her position was vacant. And then we've actually had a lot of hourly turnover, and it seems to be taking longer and longer to fill those positions. It's, I'm making an assumption, just seeing other organizations and other businesses, that the labor market is probably a big factor in that. Our salaries are always a little bit less, but people enjoy working in libraries, so we do get applicants. It just, yeah, it's a little harder to fill those positions. Services and supplies, we actually divvy up, and it's just utilities. We divvy those up, and you can see how good I am at guessing how much we're gonna use in the way of energy at each of the locations. It was quite off with Ceremony, but other than that, it's basically, this is something that is, we prognosticate by taking prior years and averaging it out and just projecting into the future. We do make every effort that we can to be more energy efficient, but some of our HVAC systems are older and I'm sure are less efficient. But I know we've updated light fixtures, to the LED light fixtures at Ceremony, so there are definitely ways we're trying to improve that. And then those fixed charges, which are set by the finance department, we have zero control over that. That's, it's allocated by different departments that provide services to the library, internal services, based on such factors as the square footage of the building that they're maintaining and cleaning, or the number of computers that they're, you know, replacing eventually, hopefully. Okay. I don't know. The number of telephones, we pay for landlines, of course. And so you can see that's actually a considerable cost for all of our libraries. It is proportional because of square footage is different at different locations, but it is substantial. And I mentioned, yeah, so telephones, the information services, Division of Finance manages the telephone infrastructure, and so there's costs for those. The staff computers, building maintenance and repairs. You know, we live in a kind of a foggy area, and so they have to replace dry rot, things like that. Messenger service, we have interdepartmental messenger service. Copiers, we have copiers at two of our locations for staff to use, and there's a depreciation there. And then the library, the city is self-insured, so there's costs for those. So those are our fixed charges. And that was the breakdown. Were there questions?
I do have a question. So I'm adding up all the hours.
Mm-hmm.
It's 119 hours per year. I don't know if anybody knew. But that's 119 per hours, hours yearly. It's not a lot. So I'm just, it's just a curiosity question. If the staff over here, Bay Shore, they're, if they're opening, opening, they're only opening 16 hours, are they considered full-time or part-time?
So at the Bay Shore Library, it is, it's a shared staff with the John Daly Library. So we have a librarian, a professional librarian, who provides professional librarian services, but also acts as a branch manager for both those locations.
So she's in both.
And then we have one library assistant who is full-time, and he left us for other greener pastors, and we're in the process of filling that position. And he or she will also be split in the same way. They'll just alternate locations. And then we fill in with part-time hours because those people get to take their lunches and their breaks, and they get to, you know, go to training and take a vacation day. So we do have a third person, at least for part of the day, over at Bay Shore. And I know I filled in recently there. It's, you have to have, the two people is the minimum requirement, but you need the third person so that there's some freedom of movement for the librarian to do outreach or, you know.
When do we consider that Bay Shore will increase some hours?
It would require adding some funds for additional staff. Staffing, yeah.
So if this staff will only be allocated to Bay Shore, would that make a difference in salaries? If we decided to increase the hours for Bay Shore?
We would have to take them away somewhere else.
From somewhere else, yeah.
We'd have to pull it from somewhere else?
Yeah.
Unless we have authorization in the next budget cycle to add staff, which is certainly our hope, but for this, we're kind of stuck with the limitations of the budget we have for this current fiscal year. It was the same way last year. It's by far not ideal. Do the best we can with the resources we're given.
So if we increase it up to 20, would that make a difference?
It gets real tricky because without adding more full-time staff, it's really difficult to add hours at any library.
So do you think that's fair for the community? Because we don't have budget for employees, therefore the hours for Bay Shore libraries is decreased?
That's true for every branch.
We reduced one, at one or more days at each location during last round.
But it's still, if you look at the numbers, they're still, it's still considered a very low hour, very low for 16. It's still considered low for Bay Shore.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Have the hours, have the hours always been like this?
No.
A huge cut.
No, there was a time way back when, when the library opened. It was actually open six days a week at one point.
When I started, Ceremony was open seven days a week.
Yeah.
Like all the branches? Yeah, they were all the way up to Saturday, I remember.
I remember, I think.
And then it cut down. So my thing is, people move in, people move out. So the crowd or the community that was there during that time, you know, that we open up in it, and I don't know how we come about to 16 hours and who decide 16 hours is best for Bay Shore. That's my concern, that all the way down to 16.
It was, I think a big part of that is to enable one set of full-time staff to staff two locations. So that you have one librarian and one library assistant that are staffing, so you have that alternating with John Daly.
But still, that doesn't, me as a community member, that still doesn't make me feel good because you're only looking at the salary versus the needs of the community. So when it's come down to 16, the answer to the community, oh, because we don't have enough budget to maintain a full-time person or to keep your hours. One other community concern is too, that the hours are cut down from the library, therefore you don't see patrons because the hours are cut down.
That's definitely a cycle that you see at all the locations, actually, but to the extreme at Bay Shore.
So what do I do as a community member to increase the hours for Bay Shore?
I think as a community member, as in a trustee, the advocacy is your strongest role. We would love every library to open seven days a week, absolutely. That is our desire.
I'm not asking for seven days, I'm asking for about 20.
Well, I just want you to know that this is not an easy thing for us. It's like sacrificing a baby. It was really difficult, based with the resources, where the gate count and the materials were moving.
But if you really look at it, Mr. Curran, all these branches over here, even their budget, Ceremony went over their budget. Bay Shore only spent, what, 7,674? They're still within there. We're the lowest one that don't spend a lot. So my fight in is, we increase the hours, there is still room there to have a full, somebody to be there just for Bay Shore instead of shared with John Daly.
Then we would take away from John Daly, and we would have the same argument.
But John Daly already have their full budget over there. Bay Shore don't.
It's the same, it's one and the same. So imagine you have a glass of water, and you have two cups, and you've got to transfer the water from this cup to those two. You don't get to refill that cup. So if we put more into the Bay Shore, there will be less in John Daly. And although it's a really difficult choice, it's the number of people served. I mean, the number of people served at Ceremony compared to any of the other branches is, it's disproportionate. It's just where people gravitate.
Because they have more hours.
No, when the hours, when the hours were equal, the foot traffic was not, not even close.
So you guys never had this problem before?
What, I'm not sure I understand the question.
When did Bay Shore's hours went down?
In our last budget cuts, we just didn't, how many years? Was that, maybe four years ago?
It was about four years ago. However, as Angela, you mentioned, they opened at six days a week, but that was, that was reduced because the visits were lower than anticipated. Because it's a little bit isolated geographically, and I think the population in that geographical area is a little bit smaller, maybe.
It gets harder to get to. So when you, do you guys have an internal system for how you allocate your hours and your staffing per branch? Like, do you use the foot traffic and the checkout and the computer usage to determine the hours that are allocated per branch?
Well, we want to make.
In a schedule?
Yeah, I mean, the schedule came out of a budget, a biennial budget a few years ago when we had to, and everything, the recreation division, there were cuts everywhere. We had to eliminate, you know, everything that wasn't a shared online resource. We eliminated a lot of things. We cut back on the fish to the point where they become ill. So there were a lot of reductions that year, and we looked at, not just, you know, obviously there were, factored in was the busyness of the various branches, but also knowing that people come in units of, you know, one person and being able to split people. And so we tried to stagger to be able to cover more time with fewer people, and also to look at contingencies too, because as it is now, we're down just that one person, and we're having to send somebody over. And when you send somebody from one location, you just create a gap there.
Yeah.
So I'm filling in a lot, or, you know, the cataloger fills in a lot. So it's just a matter of spreading those staffing resources in units of one individual as far as possible, in a way that we can do sustainably, where if somebody is out, we don't have to close. You know, we don't want that.
Yeah, I have a question, because I'm also having a hard time understanding. I know that the hours are very much connected to the availability of staff, but I'm having a little hard time with the numbers. So like the 0.9 FTE for Bay Shore, that's not a full FTE? Is it because it's a shared full-time staff person?
So if you look at Bay Shore and John Daly together, that is, that is two people plus a little bit of support from a staff person that's kind of shared.
Okay, like a part-time?
No, she's a full-time person that's kind of supports all the locations. So that, those, it's, well, that's Patricia and it was Paul David, so.
And then these FTEs are the FTEs that don't ref, these reflect the vacancies, right?
Yes, this is what is budgeted, not necessarily what is filled. So currently, we do not have two people. We have one person and some part-time, hourly people, and they have limited hours. One of them, several of them are students, and they have other jobs, so.
And so for the two branches that share staff, what's the total number of FTEs that we're missing? Like, what's the vacancy?
Just one.
Which is one?
One person.
And what is that like?
That's a library, it's a library assistant. It's a full-time library assistant. It's civil service, and that's part of why it does take longer to fill. And we are, we are hopefully far along in that process.
So with our budget, we still can manage to have anybody that will be able to cover, to have somebody like that with that position?
So we are filling that position, and then when that person comes on board, he or she will work Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at John Daly and Tuesday, Thursday at.
Again, but not at Bay Shore.
Tuesday, Thursday at Bay Shore. So he or she will just alternate, report to work one place one day and the next day the next place.
And then what's the vacancy for the hourly staff for the shared?
So we don't have any vacancies at either of those locations. We do have somebody who had filled in a little bit better and her school schedule shifted, and so that's always a factor as well, just. So it's a complicated puzzle, availability and.
And when is this?
Like, when is this scheduling revisited? Is it revisited every year, or is that? It's been like this for like, as long as I've been a trustee for two years, so.
It was before.
It was about four years, I think.
Four years now, okay.
It was born out of a process of creating a budget that was lower than what the previous budget had been.
If you recall, we did a couple of meetings ago, the snapshot of how many staff we had in, I think we went to 2010? Eight, 2008 compared to today. We lost a lot of positions. And when we lost those positions, we lost the ability to keep the libraries open the way they had been.
We had 24 full-time staff, and we. We had twenty-four full-time staff and we have, well, we have sixteen budgeted, but only fifteen.
So what do we do to increase the hours for Bay Shore?
Increase staff.
So how many staff you're looking for?
I, I, I think we would need a minimum of two full-time staff out there to restore those hours.
So right now, we have one full, full-time?
You, you have-
Two-fifths.
You're sharing, you're sharing with John, John Daly.
I, I mean, I know what sharing is, I know what it is.
So they have, they, they, it's-
So literally you need one.
It's paired, so one doesn't really help, we, we'd need two out there to keep, to keep the library open more.
But even for just like, cause she's asking for an increase of, as a community member, she's asking for increase just by four hours, like from your approximation, you think only, it, it would still need two?
You still need two if only you need four hours?
To increase.
It, it goes back to my analogy of, of the water in the glass. If, I would have to take those four hours from somewhere else.
Right.
It's, it's a finite.
So, to, yeah, for, for four hours, you don't have a lunch, but, but you'd still have to send somebody out there to staff it. You'd have to send two people out there to staff it.
We wouldn't put one person.
No, for safety.
No, they couldn't because they would, it would, they would close up for bathroom.
But you have another helper there.
The, oh, the hourly person?
Yes.
Oh, I don't, he doesn't, I mean, we would have to probably bring someone in.
I would still, yeah, cause what they're saying, so then it's at sixteen right now, right? Two eight-hour shifts. So with one four-hour shift added, they would, to be like in compliance, they would still need two team members. So then in the end, you should probably just increase it another eight. And then we would have to, I think what needs to be revisited is how much does that FTE cost to put, um, to really put it in place and that takes time, so.
And we're talking about, and like if it would be an additional person, it would be, that would be an additional person on top of imagining that the sixteen positions for the libraries would be filled.
Yeah, at, at least one, I think, I honestly, I think we need two to do. Because we're not, to add four hours, we're not gonna split somebody's day where they're working four hours at John Daly and four hours.
So it has to be eight hours.
I would prefer it be in, in a full eight-hour.
Yeah, it would have to be eight hours or, you know.
So that would be like what, twenty-four hours?
Yeah.
Then we look at how much we need for another PF, for, uh, P, PFT and FTE. You're saying maybe a part-time and a full-time or two full-times? That's, yeah.
Now, I'm certainly gonna advocate for at least two full-times.
Two full-times, right, because, yeah.
So the reason of why, why like the hours are like this is because like the budget has decreased?
Right, and, and going back to, again, when two thousand eight, we had twenty-four full-time lib-
They made the cut, unfortunately.
So imagine you had twenty-four full-time libraries people, which we did ten years ago. And now we're down to, for, today we have fourteen. So how do you take that much resources and still deliver the same services impossible? So we had to slash the, the number of hours we were open to make up for the fact that we lost ten full-time staff.
And then the budget decreased because?
Well, if you look at our budget, our budget is personnel, I mean, that's, that's the number one item.
All, all departments were decreased due to the fiscal condition of the city.
So it, it looks like personnel are like, uh, the librarians, the regular librarians. I'm assuming that it's the upper people of the pyramid that makes a lot of money, makes more. And that's where all the salary goes, you know, versus the regular librarians. So was there an increase of salaries on the top?
No.
Or?
There's actually a deep increase.
Management positions were eliminated, you know, um. We go way back, why, why are we the Department of Library and Recreation Services?
Cause they used it together, yeah.
There was a director of library and a director.
In fact, there was a director for library, an assistant director for library, there was a director for recreation and an assistant director for recreation and an army of admin staff. I mean, there isn't, I mean, there was not an, an increase at the top. I make less money than the people, the four people whose jobs I took, um, not even, not even close. And our admin staff was, we went from eight full-time staff to two. So the pain, the pain was deep and spread across the organization, especially in this department.
So can we table that for the next meeting? I'm still gonna fight for an increase of hours and for two full-time.
Cause even if, from a staffing perspective, cause even if like you hired two, if one calls out, then they have to still borrow from the other branch, so, yeah, two, two full-time hours. So we add that to the items, yeah.
New, um, upcoming budget.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, I think-
They can put that in there.
Yeah, I think there's, there's an opportunity.
I'm gonna fight, to fight and, and all of you as advocates of the libraries.
I mean, I know Joseph, last time you also mentioned you were gonna give us kind of an update on like, what are opportunities to give impact on this next budgeting cycle or like the different goals and priorities?
Oh, yeah, and it's, it's continuous.
If that's something we can get a sample of.
Very beginning talking stages about, we've got a, we got a new finance director and a whole new process.
Right.
They are sharing their methods right now, um, we're not plugging numbers in anywhere. But, um, the message that I'm getting for the first time and as long as I can remember, we're not making further cuts, so there may be room to grow. And, and I think if the, I'm, I'm kinda selfish that way, if the organization is gonna grow, I would like nothing more than the growth to be in the Department of Library and Recreation Services and specifically, um, some of the library positions that have been eliminated over the years. Again, I mean, that, that is, that's the message. We, not long ago, we had twenty-four full-time library staff. Today, on October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, we have fourteen. Fourteen that are working, fifteen?
Yeah, spread between four branches, yeah, it's not much.
So I have a, I have a crazy question. When you, when you guys decide the hours and the budget that cut, I get that, the hours are decreased, I get that. Who vote and approve for the hours to be cut down from certain branches? Does?
We, we had, we had long discussions at, at the Board of Trustees, I see Mr. Lux is, is out in the audience. It, it's not, it's not an easy task and we, we certainly reviewed it in depth with the trustees. We met with the community, um, clearly the community in Bay Shore was not happy with, with the outcome, nor, nor, nor am I, I mean.
Who did you meet with?
Pardon?
Who was the community from Bay Shore that you met with?
There were about forty-five people, I, from, from, from different areas of the Bay Shore.
Okay, so I just wanna know the process, so.
And then in the end, the, the budget, which determines all these things, comes before city council.
The key is not to wait until it gets to the city council, I mean, our, our role as advocates is ongoing.
Yeah, yeah, I think if there's any opportunity at the next meeting, our next meeting, to kind of just talk about what are some budget priorities that are coming up around libraries? Like what's, where's the conversation at? Um, I think it would just be helpful to kind of ground us and see where we really wanna impact and weigh in.
I think that's great, we have been in this hang-on and not letting anything go mode for eight years, nine years. And, and we are looking forward to the time where we can try to get back some of what we've lost for the community.
I wish there's a way that in the beginning of the budget, um, when it's first started to, um, put in place, that each funding for each library, each branch will be allocated, you know, directly, okay, say for example, we only have twenty dollars in the bucket. Bay Shore, you're getting five dollars. And you work your expenditures, personnel, that's all in, in your five dollars. But I guess that's not how we do it. Pe, please tell me that's how you do it. Because I'm trying to see where, if they're not spending a lot of money, they should be have increasing hours because we're low at spending. We didn't go over, they didn't, they're within the, right there. That's my fight and that's my debate. Are each libraries or branches allocate a certain amount per year?
There, there's sta, I mean, we look at more as the staffing requirements for each library.
I'm not talking about the staff, but for the whole, the whole, the whole thing.
It, it, it grows out of the staffing typically, so the, the full-time staff allocations. And then for part-time, it's the number of hours of each classification. And from that, the, the money is determined based on that, not the other way around.
So the answer to my question is no, it doesn't allocates like that.
Not, not, not for the bulk of.
So you can go overspending? So like Bay, uh, like Ceremony went over their, their spending? So how do you fill in the hole?
That, that's a great question. So overall, for the last fiscal year, the city's general fund operating budget was almost eighty-six thousand, eighty, excuse me, eighty-six million dollars. Of that, about three and a half million is allocated for libraries. The eight thousand dollars that was overspent at Ceremony as a percentage of the overall three point five million, um, it's almost negligible. And it, it's really, from the finance budgeting side, really focused on the bottom line. So if you overspend in one area and underspend in the other, as long as your net isn't a negative number, it's, it's when, it's when we spend more than we have as a department where it gets problematic.
But wouldn't it be nice if each library allocates a certain amount? Because by now, you guys kinda have some sort of what it spends in maintenance, you know, personnel. If, if it's nothing is changed, everything steals the same, then I will feel like the budget still stay the same. But where do you pull the money to cover for that hole right there? Or does it le, does it leave Ceremony a deficit?
No, so, um, where we have, like, where we've underspent for John Daly and Bay Shore, that is because somebody quit and they left and it took us a long time to fill that position. And we would much rather, we want the person, the, the fact that we've under or overspent what we, what we anticipated, it, um, will come out in the wash cause it's a small amount. We're really more interested in having those positions filled with people that are working, providing services at our branches.
And then I feel like you touched on this a little bit the last time around, any cost savings from vacancies? Um, cause I know, my understanding is that these cost savings don't necessarily roll over because they're one-time, right, there's from the one-time vacancy. Um, and so whether they get allocated, then I, I think I just forgot what you all mentioned, but. Or does it just stay?
Salary savings, it doesn't get put into like another bucket, it's just kind of-
Generally, they're not re-appropriated. And, and one of the other challenges we faced this year and we're gonna be facing in next year too is we, a lot of our part-time people are minimum wage, the minimum wage is going up and up. That wasn't necessarily accounted for. So some of those salary savings get absorbed and that's how you end up with a negative number. For example, at Ceremony. If, if there was a significant huge amount of salary savings, we'd certainly lobby to re-appropriate that in another way.
So, so in the case like that, right, if the salary savings get, if there's, yeah, if those get like to address like the minimum wage thing, um, what happens then for the budgeting for the next cycle? Because would, would the budgeting for the next cycle then have to account for those?
We, we are gonna do our very best to project that. Daly City did pass an ordinance of this year, last year, um, that, that steps up minimum wage. So now that we know what those numbers are, we'll factor that in.
Are there any other questions?
Do you have any questions, Alex?
In the interest of time, I think we'll probably just, you know, continue this conversation for the next, um, agenda item. All right, so, um, so for my report, um, so me, Joseph, Shayla, um, a couple of members of DCPLA, um, a couple of council members, Pam and Ray Buena Ventura and the city manager met, um, when did we meet? Like three weeks ago, we met about three weeks ago, very briefly, um, to speak about, um, possible upcoming projects that we'd like to see within the libraries. So we're at the very like beginning phases of this, um, series of meetings. But the plan is for us to meet on a bi-monthly basis. Okay, um, did you wanna touch on that? Pretty, we were, uh, we just met for a short time, so it's, it kinda just seems like it's at the beginning phases of, and I know that you guys are advocates for the libraries because you live there, so. Okay, and, um, so when it comes to advocacy and creating awareness, um, we had our Coffee with Trustees event recently for Philippine X Lit Night. So Eileen and Patricia did a fantastic job of showcasing Filipino poets and writers. So me, Lauren and Justine were in, um, attendance with our, um, setup. But, uh, I talked to a few community members, but the focus was really on that event. So that was really great. And, um, has anybody had an opportunity to visit libraries? Um, I mean, we were there, right, so we were able to talk to, um, some of the, um, staff at the libraries.
Would you be able to touch a little bit on that for our new trustee?
Yeah, so, um, so we kind of have, um, these pillars that we go by when it comes to being a trustee member. And part, um, and one of them is really, you know, being advocates for, um, the staff members and the libraries, for the community, um, and a liaison to city council, right? That's why we have these in-depth discussions. And one of the pillars, um, that we have in being, you know, successful is, um, our advocacy, right, where we, um, periodically, you know, meet with the community, meet with the, um, staff members and just really show a face and a presence within the libraries. Um, we have been doing it bi-monthly, I would say, yeah, so we do it bi-monthly. Um, so we will, when we agenda build, we'll figure out when our next event is. And, um, you know, not everybody has to go, but it's great if you can show face and participate every now and then. In addition, um, is our, um, communication, where we, um, do library visits. We ideally would like to visit the libraries like once, once a month, you know? Um, and there's four libraries, so you have your library of choice, you can stop in, announced, unannounced. But really come in to speak to the, uh, staff of the libraries. And we'll keep that on the agenda for, um, next month. The next, the other pillar is community involvement. And, um, and that's also being present in the community. The city has a lot of events, um, the Filipino Lit Night was one of them. They had Latin X, which was, um, a, um, community event. And most recently, Casayahan, which was a Filipino-American event, um, at Marchbanks Park. So we like to be able to attend those events as well as, um, trustees. And then our last pillar is fundraising, where we work closely with DCPLA and they actually, um, attend our meetings. So with that being said, I'd like to bring up, um, Mr. Lux.
Thank you very much, President Lagarda.
Evening. Evening.
Welcome to the newest member of the Board of Trustees. Uh, DCPLA, the Daily City Public Library Associates, uh, had its most recent meeting on Tuesday, October fifteenth. Uh, excuse. Sorry. Pay attention, that's tonight. Uh, most recent meeting on September twenty-fourth. That sounds a lot better. Uh, chaired by our president, Tom Norris. Uh, financial statement was submitted by our treasurer, Pauline Fong Martinez, uh, in writing. Uh, it was presented to the board and accepted, uh, along with, and this is very sad news for us, a letter of resignation from Pauline, uh, due to a new job and work requirements that did not allow her to continue her involvement, which has been extensive with DCPLA. So she's going to be a difficult person to replace. Um, there was a report on events. Uh, Crazy About Cars was reviewed. Uh, financially, it fell a little short of its goal, which was twenty-five thousand dollars. It raised a little over twenty-one thousand dollars.
That's great.
So there's ongoing fundraising efforts to try and get it up to that goal. Uh, there was a discussion about when to, uh, present the grant for the Lucky Day Collection and the Three-D Carving Machine. October twenty-eighth was suggested, uh, is that what we're going to do, do you know? Okay, okay, well, that was discussed, uh, which is a city council meeting. And typically, when these presentations are made, there was a discussion about recruiting additional board members, not only to replace Pauline, but to replace some board members who are terming out and cannot continue. Uh, we've been very fortunate to have a strong board and members who have been willing to serve more than one term. But after two consecutive terms, they have to sit out a term before they can come back on the board. And that's what we're facing. If any of you know of people that you think would be, uh, strong members of DCPLA, uh, feel free to mention them to Tom Norris, our executive director, Victoria, or any other member of the board. There was a discussion about the name of, the name DCPLA, Daily City Public Library Associates, because it's long and it's kind of complicated, and a lot of people don't really understand what it means. And so there's some interest in finding something that's more pithy and to the point. Uh, and that's going to be discussed at the DCPLA November retreat. And I suspect that we will see some change coming out of that. Uh, there's been a growing sense that that would be a good thing to do. The executive director reported that she has found a person who is willing to organize a book sale. Typically, the book sale would be earlier in the year. Uh, this would be in twenty-twenty. The date is to be determined. Uh, but that's good news, uh, because Victoria works very, very hard and putting that book sale responsibility on her shoulders would, would really be too much of a burden. So, uh, we're hoping that this person, uh, you know, comes in, takes charge, and that we'll have a good book sale to present to the community. That's it, are there any questions?
When we do the book sale, is it just, um, like, in person? Do you guys do anything online?
Uh, no, the book sale is a one-time event, uh, usually over a weekend. In the past several years, it's been held at the, uh, what's it called, the center?
Metro Two Eighty.
Metro Two Eighty Center.
Okay.
Uh, one of the stores that are empty has been donated to DCPLA. And so we organize the books that have been stored, uh, by category, uh, set them up on tables, organize a community art contest through the schools. And try and get as much interest and excitement going about that. And then open the doors and, uh, sell as much as we can. But it's all, it's all on that, uh, you know, Saturday and Sunday schedule, nothing online.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lex.
You're welcome.
So let's, um, go ahead and move on to our, um, agenda building for our next meeting, which will be in November. November nineteenth. So our Coffee with Trustees event, do you guys, do you all want to do one in December?
I, it might be tough.
It might be tough, okay.
The holidays.
The holidays. The quietest times, uh, so we won't get a lot of participation. Okay, so we can just go ahead and, um.
Is there any way we can change? The name for that?
Yeah, what, what would you like?
Like meet and greet. No, I'm just kidding. I mean.
Yeah, I agree with that, I think that's, it's not very tempting to go, right?
Yeah, and it's, eh, people think that it's only for us.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's not too inviting. That's what I think.
Okay, um, did you have anything in mind, or did you want to think about it? We can definitely read. The, the premise of it is not to really just have coffee with us, right? It's, it's really to meet us and so that we can, you know, understand the community and then bring it back. And, you know, what are their concerns? And just to show face, right?
I think the way that we did it tied to Philippine X Lit, like Lit Night was really good. Like, I think because the event brought a lot of foot traffic. It was, it was just a good space for us to meet people. Um, so I'm even wondering if maybe for the next one, we can, uh, we can, yeah, we can connect with one of the librarians. I know, I was planning on connecting with Patricia, so I can ask if she has anything. But if there's anything happening at the other libraries, like, just even like a small little event that we could tie the Coffee with Trustees to, I think that would just be better. And rename it as well, but.
Yeah, we can definitely, um, rename it. But the last one, we did it like around when they had their, like, storytime, and that was kind of pretty successful because it was like a lot of, um, participants or a lot of patrons there. So, yeah, we can definitely do that. But we'll kind of just put that, um, off to the side right now because the, um, holidays are coming up, right? Um, okay. Um, and then we ha, I kind of have like different notes here. So do we want to put, um, emergency closure on the agenda item? Okay.
Didn't we want to go over the Bill of Rights, too?
Yeah, we did, the community meeting room.
So.
I think we had, there was like a library bill of rights that we wanted to look over as well together.
And we also wanted to check out that policy number six, library community meeting room, that we never did.
So emergency closure, library bill of rights, and meeting room, um, all in one shot? All, all at the next meeting?
Sounds like a whole meeting.
Okay. Um, is that? Okay.
They're, they're both relatively short policies, I think we can get through it.
And then Joseph, what would be a good time, what would a good, what would be a good meeting month to start thinking, like, to start having conversations around like the budget priorities for the libraries for next year?
Always, every day.
So next meeting?
Well, and, and I wouldn't save it for a meeting because you all have direct access. Someone, someone that sat in those seats last night appointed the five of you. So you've got a, a direct conduit to that person to advocate year-round, not, not just on meeting nights. Now, you can come to any meeting, for, for, you're talking about a city council meeting or something specifically related to the budget?
That we can talk about together.
Like moving the council pieces around.
Yeah, just so we can all kind of be on the same page around like, what are the priorities that we're looking at around the library? And what do we want, yeah, like.
Well, I think in, in terms of the Bayshore, a huge consideration is the amount of development that's going on out there. Last night.
We're gonna have.
Last night, this city council.
Our population are gonna go.
It is, it's gonna go up. Last night at the city council meeting, for those of you who watched, they, they awarded exclusive right to negotiate to develop twelve acres that the city owns near the Cow Palace.
The Cow Palace.
This morning, the Cow Palace Board did the same action, the same developer, for a bigger chunk of property. So there's going to be building. And we already know Midway is going to increase to about four hundred and fifty units, uh, and they're getting really close to their final plan. So there is going to be an influx of people there. And I think that's the kind of strategy used to, when, when you're discussing, um, to have some talking points of why. Why, why should Bayshore have more hours? And one, because the population is growing, there's a greater need. But in, in terms of a specific forum, I may have to think about that one, what might be the most effective?
A good time to discuss for us publicly, you know?
It's, it's. On our side, we will, we're already, we're already looking now. If you can save that question for November, I, I will hope to have a, a better answer. But I think the important thing is, by, by January one, is to really ramp up the efficacy. Because it's tough. I mean, th, this is, this is what, this is what the city's budget looks like. And there's a lot of departments. And I told you the library gets three point five, um, that is such a tiny piece of the pie.
And do we usually spend it all in one fiscal year?
Yeah, yeah, um, that, that's, that's the, the current fiscal year. So where, where did I find that number? I'm sorry, keep talking while I look this up.
Um, so let's, you know, shall we keep those two full-timers with the, um, hopes to increase Bayshore's hours on the agenda? How, how do we increase Bayshore's hours?
I think with, with, uh, with what the city already know with the developing, all these developers that are working.
Strong argument, yeah.
Actual concrete argument right there.
Yeah, it's facts, yeah.
And we, we can review, uh, and I'll definitely one-on-one review. Uh, I think it's great to see how Daly City compares to the surrounding cities. And we've, we've done that in this form.
And we've done that, yeah.
Compare well.
We don't compare well to ours.
And the other thing I like to remind people, back in the nineteen seventies, the city of Daly City spent about the same amount for police as it did for libraries. So we know we're spending about three point five million today for libraries. Any, any guess what the police budget is for the same time?
I guess they do more than the libraries.
Thirty-five million.
Five million.
Thirty-five million, so, so the, the police department has grown ten times larger.
Times ten, all right. So I, I think that those are, um, some good topics for next, um, agenda. One thing I do want to, um, bring up, um, before we close tonight is, um, so we know, like, um, historically, we, we typically don't have a meeting in December. Um, just because it's, it's hard with the holidays and everything, so are we good on that?
Sorry.
Yeah, okay. Is that something I'm supposed to motion? Not really.
I think that's just an announcement.
Okay, that's just an announcement, okay, sorry.
Yeah, um, and, and we can actually talk about it again in November if, if you change your mind and you really want to get together in December, then I would encourage.
Because that third.
I think it's early enough, is it?
It's like the seventh, December seventeenth.
Yeah, that's gonna be tough.
A little too close.
The seventeenth, so.
I'll be here.
All right.
Would that put us behind or not really a big deal?
I mean, I'm liking our conversations lately, um, so it's really up to us if we can commit. But, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what you're.
Oh, no, no, I don't want to meet in December, but my thing is, can we, can we add that to the agenda of November? So doing two agendas on a November meeting.
Like a longer meeting?
Like a longer meeting.
So then we would have to create the agenda right now of everything that we want to discuss?
So I've got the emergency closure policy, the library.
Those are huge, too.
Community meeting room, the library bill of rights, and the budget priorities.
You know the beauty of this group? We have no time, like, we can stay here, basically till, you know, the next day if we really get a good.
I don't, no, thank you.
We'll have to make sure Alex is ready to go to school in the morning. School night, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a school night. All right, um, so we have, um, some pretty good topics. But I think, you know, if for some reason, um, there's something that comes up during that time and you think about it, definitely bring it up, and that's fine, and we can have a discussion. Um, okay, any other?
Do we need to motion?
Okay, okay. Um, any other announcements and communications?
Oh, yeah, well, actually, yeah. One, one of the other items that was on the city council meeting agenda last night was the annual Food for Fines program. And the city council did pass a resolution, so we will participate in that program between Thanksgiving and New Year, I believe, roughly.
What program again?
Food for Fines?
Food for Fines, yeah, so if you have a, a fine on your library record, you can bring in non-perishable foods.
Non-perishable, okay.
And expunge those funds away, fines away.
And when does that start? All of November. Okay, so non-perishable items.
Yes.
Do you guys want to come on the October twenty-sixth to the block party Bayshore?
I will be there tabling.
So I was thinking if we can show up this.
Yeah, October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth.
What, what is that?
It's the block party.
No, is it a Saturday?
It's a Saturday, it's also a make-a-difference day.
So I'll be tabling for.
Would you be able to shoot her?
But I can, yeah, I can send you the information.
Yeah.
Yes.
Definitely represent, because that's, that's, that's a fun, that's a fun event. Okay.
Well, and other community events, I, I think I can mention to you this Saturday, October nineteenth? Is that Saturday's day?
Yes, that's the Saturday.
Saturday, October nineteenth, here at City Hall, from ten AM to noon is the Second Annual Love Not Hate. There will be free food and entertainment.
And when is that, I'm sorry, I need to write that down.
Saturday.
Next Sat, this, this Saturday, this upcoming Saturday.
It's ten to noon, ten AM to noon.
Was there another event that was set out to all the council, to all the commissioners about a retreat, uh, something?
Yeah, there's like a commissioner dinner.
Oh, there's a commissioner dinner.
December sixth?
We have a lot of things.
Friday.
Yeah, I think it's December sixth.
There's a, so, so this, it is, we are in interesting times. I am really optimistic. We have been, I've, I've been here a long, long time, and we have been cutting and cutting and cutting. And not only have we cut a lot of staff, but one of the big annual events we did for a thank you for all the commissioners that give so freely of your time, uh, was an appreciation dinner around the holidays. And I was really pleased to see that that's coming back this year, and I hope all of you are able to make it. It is one little tiny token gesture of thanks for all the time and energy you guys put in to this job. And, and for the people watching at home, you know, our, our trustees are not paid. And this is a volunteer, uh, labor of love for you guys, and we appreciate that. So, so I'm, I'm hoping that is a sign that, you know, we're, we're starting to turn the corner and things are getting better.
I feel good that it is.
Yeah, I feel optimistic for sure.
Yes, and with all the, you know, the market is gonna be good.
Right, um, so no public comment, I think our visitors left.
Yes, cheers.
Um, so with that, um, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.